Thing. That's all right. All right, today is, today is Monday, February 5th, 2024. We'll now call the City Council Special Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Item number two, our roll call. We do have a quorum of council. And number three are public comments. City Secretary, do we have any public comment requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Okay.
Nicholas Sire. Mr. Sire, please state your name and address for the record, and also please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicholas Sire. I'm here to represent myself. I live in Missouri City as a registered voter. I wanted to briefly comment about the traffic calming policy that will be presented this evening. Obviously, we have not yet been presented with that presentation, but I had a few thoughts that I wanted to encourage City Council as well as Public Works and the general public to keep in mind as you move forward to talk about that policy or creating that new policy. Obviously, there was an HOA liaison that was in existence between the city and the various HOAs in the city. That employee had left at one point, and then there was a new employee who came on board to assume that role with the various roles and responsibilities. I wanted to encourage City Council and Public Works to focus on maintaining the relationships with the HOAs and maybe getting further feedback about the traffic calming policy before it's put into play. I'm sure they're more in touch with their local neighborhoods and may have further comments that might not have necessarily been considered as part of the current draft policy. I also wanted to caution everyone in the room to focus potentially on providing more budget and financial resources to the fire and police departments rather than focusing on a traffic calming policy and the various construction improvements that will come into play as part of that policy. I think by, debatably, by having a better fire and police department funding that will drive better responses and improve the community in a much more meaningful way. Obviously, in Missouri City, we have an aging infrastructure that dates back to the late 1960s. I would encourage everyone in the room to think about preemptively dealing with aging infrastructure before you put in policies that deal with calming traffic. Obviously, if you install new infrastructure related to that policy, debatably, you'll have trucks, trailers, diggers, damage to curbs, various, it's more of a Band-Aid implementing a traffic calming policy than focusing on the aging infrastructure first that, debatably, hasn't been focused on as heavily up until this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll jump to item 4A. Receive a presentation and provide direction to staff on traffic claiming policy. We have a presentation by Marcus Knell, Assistant City Engineer. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, in the interest of time and to provide you all plenty of opportunity for questions, I'm going to go through my slides fairly quickly. On that, introduction to our traffic calming policy. It is our draft traffic calming policy. And where this started out is we've received a number of concerns regarding speeding and cut-through traffic, then also some site-specific concerns, crosswalks around parks, schools, things of that nature. We wanted to have a cohesive policy that as we're receiving these concerns from our residents, then we can address them in a systematic and organized manner. There's a need for a policy. We are in the process of transitioning from a bedroom community to a very integrated urban community. And that changes the number of cars on the roads. That changes driving patterns. That changes how people are just moving around. And so, we need something that we can look at to help navigate that. And also, we want to balance mobility and safety. And safety is paramount. Safety is paramount. But we want to ensure that people can move from their homes to their places of work and business and back again in a timely manner. So, our traffic calming program, the draft traffic calming program, it contains a process for the traffic calming project initiation, evaluation, and then the implementation, as well as a toolbox showing some of the different methods we can utilize. So, we didn't create this in a vacuum. We looked at what some other people were doing. We looked at Fort Ben County, and we received a draft of their policy. We looked at what Sugarland's doing. And then we looked at some of the larger cities within our local development triangle, city of San Antonio, Austin, Houston, much larger metropolitan areas that have navigated this historically. From this, we have a procedure with four overall steps, starting with a project request, study and ranking, project selection, and then community feedback. So, going into step one. Our traffic calming projects, we get a lot of residents and HOAs that reach out to us. And so, we want to leverage that knowledge. Initially, they're going to be submitted through our traffic calming project request form. These will come from the HOA. If no HOA is present, or if there is no HOA within that area, we'd be looking for 75% of the individuals that are affected or potentially affected by any traffic calming improvements. They'll gather up those signatures, information. They'll submit it to us. They'll also identify within this some of the concerns they're seeing in the area, whether it's speeding, street racing, larger truck traffic, cut-through traffic, crashes, pedestrian safety, school-related traffic, or just any other traffic need that they've identified. So, we're going to take those requests, and then we're going to rank them. And we're going to score them, and we're going to rank them. And towards the end of this slide presentation, I'll show you an overall process. But we intake those over the course of a year. We study, we rank them. And some of the things we're going to be looking for are traffic volumes. How many vehicles are actually going through this study area? Is there a history of crashes and incidents? What's the measured speeds? Is it just one individual? You know, I was 16 once, and I had a car that was with an oversized engine. My neighbors didn't like me. Am I the only one in the neighborhood that's causing these problems? Or is it a systemic problem? So, how many people are exceeding that 85th percentile? Are there sidewalks on one or both of the streets? That indicates if there's increased pedestrians possibly walking in the roadway. We want to know that. Are there other bicycle and pedestrian facilities? Bike lanes and uncontrolled pedestrian crossings? When I say uncontrolled pedestrian crossings, I'm talking about crosswalks. In general, I'm talking about crosswalks that aren't at stop signs and stoplights. So, those kind of pedestrian crossings. Are there community destinations? Are schools, are parks, are libraries? Places where people like to walk to with their families? And then are there visual obstructions? Road rage curvature? If there's a little hill in the road? If it's going side to side? Or are there other visual obstructions present? Things on the side of the road and vegetation, things of that nature. So, moving into review and project selection. After we've received these potential projects, we've ranked, done an initial ranking on these projects. Now, we're going to get together with police and fire because we want to make sure that our emergency response teams have the ability to get to places quickly. We don't want to implement something that will delay response times. So, we're going to coordinate with police and fire. And then from there, we're going to come up with a proposed solution as the engineering team in conjunction with police and fire. And we're going to finalize those rankings and then start selecting projects for funding going down the list, those that rank highest on downward. This is just a brief overview of some of the traffic calming tools we could use. Things like traffic circles, full road closures, curvilinear changes. Those are exciting. And speed cushions, which are some of the more popular ones that we've seen. So, step four. When it comes to actually funding the project, our draft proposal is for a four-fifth share, wherein the city itself will fund four-fifths of a community-initiated project, and then with the community participants, funding one-fifth. This is shown within other areas, some of those other traffic policies that we've looked at, that it generates good buy-in from communities. It's something that they really want. It's something that they're looking forward to investing in. And it works out well for projects. And it also has the ability to stretch ourselves a little bit further. If, instead of just funding four projects, it gives us the potential to fund five through this manner. And that lets us help more people. Of course, there's always exceptions to those things. So, if a project is initiated by the city Public Works Engineering Department, those projects would be 100% funded through the city. Or if there are projects through the city manager's discretion, which are directly identified for funding, those wouldn't have that proposed cost share. And then at the end of it, once we have the project, once we have the selection, once we have the estimated costs of the project, we're going to be providing that information back to the HOA or the resident group that proposed this project. We're going to tell them, we're going to sit down, talk with them, what we noticed, what's our proposed solution based on our engineering experience, coordinating with police and fire. And we're going to provide them maps of the study areas, supporting data. Anything that we've developed in the course of this process, we're going to provide to them. We want to be completely transparent in this process. So, talking over the schedule. We're looking at making this an annual process. So, over the course of the year, we're going to receive HOAs, resident groups submitting these project request forms. At the end of January, we're going to call that a year. We're going to take those projects that were submitted over the past year. We're going to go into our data collection. And so, that's where we're going to go back on step two and all of those different ranking points and things like that. We're going to start that study. And we're going to meet with police and fire. June, July is when we're going to be making our decisions on projects, how we're going to rank them, what order we're going to fund them, how best are we going to utilize our taxpayers' dollars to service the citizens. And then in October, coinciding with the fiscal year, we're going to kick off design and implementation of the identified projects. And so, that's the annual process of the, how our policy, our draft policy is going to work. But where we are just in developing this policy itself. So, initially, we had staff policy development. That's where we sat down, we read through these other policies. We got some ideas. Then from there, we met with city manager, director of Public Works, and had an initial review, got some feedback, made some changes. We're right here at the council feedback stage. I'm presenting it to you, looking forward to your feedback. After this, we are going to the HOAs. We are interested in the HOA feedback. If we're proposing a cost-share measure, we're not going to do that in a vacuum. We want to talk before that process is implemented. What are the ramifications? What do those things look like? We're then going to incorporate that feedback, and then we will begin implementing the policy. And that is a very quick overview, but I am available for your questions.
All right, thank you. We do have some members of council that signed up. So, I'll start with the first person, recognizing Councilmember Bron Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. And Marcus, thank you so much for the presentation. Very well put together, and I appreciate it. This is something that I am excited to see. It has come before you stopped laughing at me. CM Jones. But I really am happy to see this. So, just a couple of questions. Funding solutions. You stated in the presentation that, once you guys identify the areas or those that are interested in having these traffic calming measures, that the city would then seek out funding measures. Could you tell me, would that be funding through grants? Or are we talking about trying to find money within our current budget for these items?
We currently have $100,000 identified for traffic calming within the city's budget. We will, of course, for larger projects, seek to supplement those with grant funding or other funding sources. The bigger the project, the better the project, the more people that it benefits. That lets us shop that a little bit wider, and then we can supplement the city's funding with that.
Okay, thank you. And the one-fifth that the requesting community, you know, they would be asking. I see that your timeline basically has it in line with the city's budget during that process. But the other entity, if their budget timeline does not match what the city's budget is, then they may need additional time in order to get another budget passed or to go through their next budget cycle. So, if they don't have the funding available or the budget that's available, will their project be removed from the request? Or does it just die? What happens?
If they're waiting on their funding, then we would, of course, work with them. And we're going to make sure that, you know, those projects all, we'd start in design. And so, we can start the design process. We can work on funding the initial phases. And if it's going to come later, we can, of course, face our project process.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Recognizing, oh.
Jones.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can I just follow up? I just want to make a point here that part of the reason you see this policy is because we were having a significant number of requests coming in, and we really needed a way to evaluate them and limit. We do not want traffic calming measures, speed cushions or whatever, on every street in the city. So, trying to ensure that we are looking at this from a public safety initiative as well as getting the homeowners associations involved in this is going to help us be able to streamline the requests and limit the requests to those that only specifically address public safety issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, my last comment to this is, is that I honestly think that this is an awesome way to create a true partnership between the HOAs and the city. This is the first time I've seen one where now the HOAs really have skin in the game. Thank you. It's my last comment.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
First question is, when you get the request in and you go through the process, who's going to approve the request that you've received? Put priority on them? And where will those calming devices be located? Who determines that through the process?
So, the city's engineering department would receive the requests. We would then, in line with that schedule, where did my clicker go? There we are. In line with the schedule, city's engineering department would receive those requests. February through April is when we would do that ranking process. And then the city's engineering department, or our consultants, depending on the size of the project, would make a recommendation on the treatment and the location that would best suit the specifics of each project site. We just, we don't treat, how do I say? Not every nail needs a hammer. You know, some of them, you can just use a boot, I guess.
My guess is you're going to get a number of different, a number of requests. So, how you determine the priority of those requests, I think, is going to be really important. So, you know, and I'm not sure if you're going to set up a committee or a group to look at those? Or is that just going to be under the purview of the Public Works?
I think it's under the purview of Public Works because you're talking about specific engineering assessment of public safety as it relates to traffic calming. So, to have someone that's not trained in that, I think, would send the wrong message.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's just that, you know, as long as we know, anyway, I've got the feeling that we're going to have a high number of those. There's going to be a lot of different HOAs, you know, really wanting to be, you know, in the priority line. So, how we come across or how we come up with that priority listing is something that, obviously, that we can defend and can make sure people understand the process.
Councilmember, within the, within this study ranking section, all of these bullet points here within the draft policy have different point values attached to them for these specific items. So, as we rank these projects, everybody's going to be on a level playing field. All the projects are going to start at the same place. We're going to rank them from there, and that's how we're going to determine priority. And we're also going to make that an outward-facing publication. We're not going to be working in a vacuum.
Where do we determine, or who determines where the location is? Where you're going to place that calming device? Well, I call it a device, but, you know, it's a calming measure.
Like a speed cushions?
Yeah. Whatever. I don't know. Speed cushions are the only potential of having a, what we call a calming, calming measure.
It depends on the location, depends on the specific traffic calming measure. For example, speed cushions in general slow vehicles down to about 25 miles an hour. So, we wouldn't put those on a 40-mile-an-hour roadway. However, a traffic circle might be a useful implementation on a 40-mile-an-hour roadway. That would reduce speeds back down to 40 miles an hour. So, that would be engineering, reviewing that, looking at the locations, using our expertise in determining what's safe and accomplishes the mission.
Well, let's say that you get to a point where you say, well, speed cushions aren't good here. We need a circle drive, if you will. Is that going to be a part of this process? Or does that kick that request out to another category where you try to determine whether or not it's, number one, efficient? And if you have the funding and whatever other criteria you establish? So, does it move it out of this domain?
It would. Because, I mean, think about, let me make sure I get it right, Lake Olympia or Olympia Parkway, where initially, there was the request for roundabouts in those areas to control traffic. And because of the cost, because of the fact that we were, the residents didn't want to give up some of the property around and impact their structures, we decided that go in a different direction. So, if it's outside of the window of what we would be able to do within the $100,000, it's going to kick it out anyway. And that's what's going to help us manage it better and be able to defend whatever it is that we're doing because we are getting a host of requests now.
Yes.
Without a process. So, this is to try to define that and ensure that everyone understands what the parameters are.
And you say the funding that we have for that is $100,000?
It's $100,000.
How much does, do we have an estimate of what a standard calming device would run?
In order of magnitude cost, if we were to place just a single set of speed cushions, that's around $10,000.
How many?
$10,000 for a single set of speed cushions.
So, you've got 10 locations where you can put calming devices?
If there's speed cushions.
Good luck. Priority, that's why I say priority is going to be, going to be really important. The, I'm assuming that we've run this by PD and Fire Department to make sure that the devices that we're putting there won't have any physical damage to our units?
That's what it said right there.
That's step three, Councilmember.
Okay. Okay. And how was the split determined with the HOAs?
The split was borrowed from the city of Austin. They do something very similar, and they have shown good effect with that. And we like to imitate people that are doing things well.
And the reason I ask is that, you know, some HOAs have, you know, additional dollars that they could apply towards this. But I would think there's some HOAs that are cash-strapped. So, they're going to be, you know, I think, you know, in a hard spot to try to come up with their one-fifth, if, you know, if they're putting in for that. So, you know, if we could get something out to the HOAs when we put out this, that, hey, and I know we're putting out its one-fifth, but that one-fifth could equal whatever it would be. Would you say it was 10,000?
10,000.
So, that one-fifth could be $2,000. So, make sure that they're aware that those dollars, that's, those dollars would be required of them so that, you know, they don't, you know, put in a request and all of a sudden realize that, hey, you know, we don't have any additional dollars to be able to apply towards, you know, this program. So, we can, I think, hopefully streamline this and make it a more efficient process as we go through. By the way, that's a great presentation. So, thank you, guys, for putting that together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Recognizing Mayor Procham, Klausur.
Yes. Councilmember Emery, I think you were cheating off my paper. Most of my questions were answered by you. But, but, so my last question is, how was the 75% threshold for the homeowners established? And is that, do you have any flexibility in that?
The 75% was established by looking over the other communities that are doing something similar. There are some communities, Fort Ben County, their initial draft one had 100%. We felt that was potentially prohibitive. There are other communities that had lower percentiles, some as low as 60%. We figured 75%, just looking at that range, 75% was a good place to start. And then as this program continues through the years, we can adjust it.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
I'm sorry. I thought I saw, anyway. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Marcus. Great presentation. Thank you all for your research. I have several questions. So, the city implementing this traffic calming equipment, you said that it's about 10,000 per set. So, what if a community, that HOA, needs 10 sets? How do y'all, how do y'all handle the cost on that? Because as Councilmember Emery mentioned, there's a lot of HOAs don't have that type of funding in their budget, but the need is really there.
Let me take this, and you can follow up with the engineering version. The idea is not to have speed cushions on every corner or every street. We're a city that's evolving from a bedroom community to a more urban area. So, some traffic is normal and expected. So, that's why we have those different criteria up there to be able to rank and determine. But I can assure you that not, one HOA is not going to be able to justify as a high priority to have speed cushions on every street.
Well, no, I didn't say every street. I'm just saying as an example, some of these HOAs, they're huge.
Yes.
And there's a lot of speeding. So, whether they need 10 or they need three, you're still talking about 30,000, estimate 30,000 for a set of three. And then their percentage, you know, that'll be $6,000 for them.
But not everything is going to be a speed cushion. There are other traffic calming measures such as widening the lanes or there's, I'll let the experts say that.
Yeah, because that wasn't mentioned in the presentation.
But there's more than just speed cushions as a solution.
City manager is correct. There are additional measures that we can utilize additionally. It's, if there is an HOA that's experiencing high speeds, cut-through traffic, things of that nature, we would be strategic in our placement of those. We wouldn't just pepper it throughout the community or throughout the HOA. There are just high-traffic areas, high-volume areas that we still would want to, if we're using speed cushions as an example, that we would still want to bring down to 25 miles an hour. And that would be a targeted implementation of that. Other things like curb extensions, traffic circles, restrictive movement barriers, those all happen at intersections, and those wouldn't happen anywhere. That's, those are things where we're trying to guide traffic to move traffic in one direction versus another. So, that's where the engineering analysis and expertise comes in, that as we look at these things, we can select, you know, we, the residents let us know that they're experiencing an issue. We look at it. We try to get down to causes and conditions. And then we select a treatment that's appropriate for what we've identified as a cause and condition of the experienced problem.
So, once that happens, if there's, say it's not the speed cushions, it's something else, would that HOA still be required to have their buy-in for that one-fifth cost?
Under the policy, yes.
My other question is, how do you determine, in the same example, if it's going to be two cushions or three? Because on some examples, there's two, there's three. How do you determine the difference?
Based on the alignment of the road, how long the road section is. If traffic is entering and exiting at different points, there's a myriad of factors that we would look at in determining how many different treatments we would place in and where exactly we would place those. One of the other things we're going to be mindful of is currently, assuming no additional funding, we have $100,000 within the city's budget. If there is one HOA that asks for, and to use the example, 10 speed cushions, that's effectively my entire budget on one project. We would be looking for the best use of the city's dollar and spreading that out through the different projects which rank highly until we reach our funding allotment.
Okay. And my follow-up to that is, which is one of my concerns, because there are so many of the roads that still need repairs, and they may not be on the list when we're getting ready to make these street repairs. How do you, how are you going to handle if there's a need for, say, a speed cushion at that particular site location, but there is a panel of road that's damaged? at that particular site location, but there is a panel of road that's damaged, or potholes or things like that? What, how do you address that and the potential of that speed cushion not being damaged? Because there could be something going on with that road.
Absolutely. So, the team that handles the panel replacement is Ms. Joy, and we're all in Public Works, so we would work together on doing that. We would, if there, if the panel or the roadway itself couldn't support the treatment due to standard wear, tear, and degradation of roadways, then we would improve that section or that panel. We would make a determination based on the proposed treatment and what's needed, and then we would look at that repair from there. But then that funding would, that wouldn't just come out of the traffic calming budget, then that would be shared funding also within Public Works to improve that roadway and the experience of the residents.
Okay. Thank you, because that was a huge concern of mine. And can you dive a little deeper in how the priority of the projects will be selected? And if they cannot meet that financial expectation, how do you determine who's the next, next as a priority?
Absolutely. So, within the priority ranking within the traffic calming policy, and I'm saying words to buy time while I look at, look it up, it, if we come back over here, for example, if we look at the third item down, measured speeds, if there, if the 85th percentile is five miles an hour over the posted speed limit, that would, that project would receive one point for that item. If it's six miles an hour, it would receive two points, and three points, four points, up to nine miles an hour, where it would receive five points, move on. So, all of these different items have different point values attached to them as we perform our engineering evaluation.
Okay.
And so, we take all of those, and we rack and stack it, to use a military term. We rank all the projects, and then we order them by their, the sum total of that point value. And let's say a project comes in, and they want, you know, 10 speed cushions, and for some reason, we say absolutely, 10 speed cushions is the right solution. And they are, or they say they want 10 speed cushions, and we say, actually, a mini roundabout is the right solution. Say, we don't want mini roundabouts, we want speed cushions. Speed cushions are nothing. We say absolutely, we'll move down to the next project on the list. And that's how we'll continue to move down. So, as projects are identified, if, you know, we reach our funding allotment, and one of those selected projects drops out for a myriad of reasons, we'll move down to the next project on the list.
But they don't have to meet all of these criterias?
They don't have to meet all of these criterias. You just receive ranking points for more of these, more of these things that are going, going wrong is the wrong word, more of these things that are being experienced within that localized area.
Okay. And then my last question is, you mentioned Austin is one of the cities that does the buy-in for the percentage for the HOAs. Are there any in our region, like the Fort Bend County, Harris County area, that do the same?
There are not.
Okay. So, this was, Austin was the only city that you're basing that on?
Basing the buy-in on, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions and a couple of suggestions. On the removal of the 100%, well, excuse me, the HOA being responsible for 100% of the funding of removal, you talked about, or in the document, it talked about unless you all, the city staff, determines that something needs to happen. So, do you believe that it's kind of spelled out clearly in this policy that if, and, I mean, how are you going to determine if it's a city decision versus the HOA request? I mean, I'm just trying to understand when that's going to be determined.
Absolutely, council member. So, that was written in, in the event that, let's say, an HOA comes in and they request a traffic treatment, we do our study, we rank our project, we invest the city's funds in this traffic calming measure. Five years from now, 10 years from now, residents change over, and they say, you know what? We just don't like these darned speed cushions anymore. We want you to come in and take them out. We already invested taxpayer dollars into that treatment. So, if we are paying in to solve an identified problem, which engineering has identified, and the residents no longer want that, if engineering goes back in and looks at it and says, yes, removing this traffic treatment wouldn't cause additional safety concerns at this time, then we, I will, how do I say? It depends. If the residents want it removed, then it would come from, they would, they would fund the removal within the draft policy. However, if we're doing, let's say, substantial roadway improvement, and we're moving from a two-lane road, and we're expanding it up to a four-lane road, the road's changing, the speed limits are changing, that traffic calming treatment is no longer appropriate for the new use of the roadway, then of course, that would be funded through the city, and that would usually be attached to a capital improvement program.
All right. So, with that, how will they, is there a process being decided upon as far as how they're going to request to have it removed, if they want to have it removed, and the details surrounding that? I know this is about the initial request of a traffic calming policy, but I think that needs to be also spelled out and provided, where they know exactly if they make that request, say, hey, you know, we no longer want this, that, you know, this is how much, or this is the process, and these are the circumstances as to how you can have it removed with that cost involved. Also, it would be helpful to have what you just described, instances where they would be responsible versus when the city would be responsible. Couple of other things, though, I think Councilmember Emery spoke about. I was going to ask what the average cost of these, these calming devices are, but you spoke to that. The HOA 75%, are you going to be working with development services to determine that 75%? Because I know, like, when we look for street name changes, I know that it's determined as to how many homes are in that particular street area, and I guess that's going to determine, right, Jennifer, how many people are needed, I guess, for the signatures to determine what the 75% is?
Yes. We're going to rely on development services expertise in determining those thresholds and the appropriate areas for that.
On Appendix A, the request form, I would suggest, I see that you have truck traffic as one of the options. You ask the people, what are the top three things, or whatever that they notice, and truck traffic is one of them. I would suggest we replace that with something else, because I'm assuming that you're talking about, when you say truck traffic, you're talking about possible 18-wheelers or large trucks? And if so, I think that needs to be kind of spelled out more. Just to say truck traffic, you know, I think is kind of vague. Also, on the Appendix A, I would say the same, because I was a little confused where it says pedestrian safety, and then you have school-related traffic. So, I don't know what school-related traffic actually means. So, I'm assuming that that's the same thing, the pedestrian safety and school-related traffic? Or if you're saying during, I guess, school hours, when people are dropping off their kids, or if they're picking up their kids, you know, it's like, I guess, a lot heavier traffic during that time. I just wasn't clear on what you actually meant by that. So, either consolidate that or have a clearer description of what it is. Also, will you monitor this activity, these requests, and our funding to ensure that we have equitable and fair access across the city? Because what I, what my, one of my concerns would be is that one side of town, one area of town, is getting all of the approvals and the calming devices, and then other areas, you know, are not. So, I think that that would be helpful to have some sort of, the ability to monitor that. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Marcus, great presentation, great idea. The visuals were great. I do have a couple of questions for you. One, have you all gone to every HOA with this?
We have not gone to the HOAs yet, Mayor. We wanted to come to this body first, and then go to the HOAs after we've received y'all's comments.
Okay. So, the way that you're presenting it today to us is 75% of the ownership will be on HOA?
I'm sorry, say again.
75% of the ownership is on HOA?
Are we talking the financial ownership?
Yeah.
One-fifth?
One-fifth. One-fifth of it. So, who maintains if it's a roundabout, I saw that where the flowers and all that? So, is that something that they would do?
That would then be owned and operated by the city. If it's a roundabout, if the HOA elects to do some specific plantings in there, we can work out an agreement with the HOA where they would maintain that. I understand some HOAs like to refresh that seasonally.
Okay. So, I read this as provide direction to staff. One of my directions would be to, you know, perhaps maybe present it to all HOA meeting, and then come back to us, so this will, we can understand if there's a heavy interest from all HOAs or not. And I think to one of the Councilmember Riley's point, maybe not every HOA can, you know, even the one-fifth can take it. And if that's the case, then how we go about it? So, I would, really would like to hear from them, as to some of these, where, so I can, for me, I can determine, you know, where are we going? The other thing is that it was a mention of $100,000 that was in the budget. Was that money put in for speed cushions, or was that money put in for calming?
That's put in for traffic calming, so that's inclusive of some of the studies we do, in addition to the physical implementation. Speed cushions are a subset of traffic calming.
So, that is, the $100,000 is part of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the $100,000 that we had would, when we initially put in that budget, where were we thinking of spending that?
We were initially thinking of spending it on these kinds of projects. We hadn't developed this process, or this policy at that time. We had, once we received that funding and received the community feedback on, you know, their desire to have some things done within their areas, we realized, these are a lot of requests. We need a systematic policy, so we're not inadvertently prefacing one area over another. Speaking to Councilmember Boni's points, we wanted to be able to look at this in a holistic and transparent manner.
Right. You know, my observation with everyone else asking the question, I'm not going to ask those questions, is who gets it? You know, what neighborhood's going to get it first? Where is it going to go? And who's going to maintain it? You know, who's going to pay the one-fifth? There's a lot of unanswered questions for me here today. But overall, for me, I like the aspect of the whole concept. I think it's a great concept. You know, I've seen this part in Sugar Land, some areas, you know, towards university. I've seen how they've done it, but I don't know anything to it as where the ownership and whether the city's doing it, or Public Works doing it, or what have you. So, I would definitely like to see some of this, come back to it. There was one other question that I had for, well, I guess, not a question and just an observation. I had the opportunity to attend one of the HOAs that was Hunter's Glen 4, and they had talked about, why are we striping these bike lanes where nobody rides their bike lane, you know, bikes anymore? So, if my understanding is correct, I think there was a budget in there for about $250,000 or something, or 200 or something like that, to a point where we striped that. So, maybe, just maybe, you know, there's some opportunities from, you know, collab, I mean, I guess, bringing all of the funds together. And if we go to something like this, if there's a heavy interest from our citizens in our HOA, maybe we could club some of that. And so, this way, we're not doing things in the neighborhood that people don't want to that point. The last thing I would make a comment is, when you drive through Bel Air, especially Bel Air and Sam Houston, and if you look at the, from Bel Air, if you look at both sides of the neighborhoods, you drive through there, there's nothing but speed cushions on every road. I drive through there, and it's literally, the purpose of it is to slow the cars down, and it does, it is working, but I can see how every, literally, every street is, every other, you know, every roadway has a speed cushion. So, I don't know if that's the image that we want in our city, maybe some of the collaboration of this. But my take on it is, I would really love to see the citizens' input on this program and come back to us with that. Thank you so much. Eilbeck, Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Okay. Thank you so much. Marcus, also going back into the policy with regards to the removal of the traffic calming device, it would be at 100% expense of the HOA. But what if it's in regards to the communities that did not have an HOA, where those had to have the 75% of the homeowners? So, would the burden of the removal be on those homeowners with no HOA? You could come back to me.
Frankly, I have not considered that. That's a good question. Thank you, council member.
Okay. So, let's definitely make sure that we take a look at that, because we would hate to have a street with 10 homes on it, or something like that, or whatever, and then they have to, you know, pay for that. And just briefly, if we could kind of look at, look over the traffic calming tools, because what I'm hearing is that everybody's just focusing on pads, or cushions, and there are a multitude of a lot of things that we could use. So, if you don't mind, just really briefly, if you could kind of touch on, touch on some of these.
Absolutely, council member. So, there are two general ways to calm traffic, slow traffic down, well, I guess, one general way, is by altering the direction of the vehicle. And so, you either alter that vertically, or you alter it horizontally. Speed cushions alter the direction of the vehicle vertically. So, as you approach it, you have to slow down, because you're going to bump, and you're going to scrape, and so you slow down there. But there's also this horizontal change, and that's things like the traffic circles or that curvilinear design, whereby me driving through a traffic, well, not driving through, but driving around a traffic circle, or driving through a roadway with some of those curvilinear treatments, I have to slow down to navigate those changes safely. That can bring my speed down. There's also things like medians, or one of the things not shown here is called a road diet, where you bring in the striping of the road, and you make it just a little bit narrower. You don't do this on big roads, you don't do this on fast roads, but on some of the smaller roads, just bring in those painted lines in a little bit. You know, I'm human, and I'm an animal, and if you put me in a confined space, I'm going to move just a little bit slower. And that's an artificially confining the space of the driver, and they'll drive slower while doing that.
How much does something like that cost?
Striping? It depends on the length of the road.
Is it, but it's not $10,000?
It would be, it would be a little, it would be cheaper than some of these improvements, however, then we would, that O&amp;M cost would increase, because we would need to continue to refresh it. So, it's, so it's, then it's the difference between annual reoccurring costs and capital costs.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you so much for that.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. I had a couple of recommendations, really, that came to mind. With the HOA one-fifth, because we're all probably, we're having an issue with that. I know I am, because I live in a district that's much older. Their HOAs fees are extremely low, so the financial burden would really be a huge burden for something like this. So, one of my recommendations would be to look at how you're going to put in the policy supplemental assistance for those HOAs, not just necessarily in District A, but across the city, that may not have the funds to be able to do that. If you guys are going to be, you know, advocating to look for grants on behalf of those HOAs, and have that money, you know, in reserve, or prepared to implement for this particular need. Or are we going to, the other thing is, you could ask for their financials for the HOA, that if they have X amount of dollars in their reserve, they would qualify or not qualify. I think it just needs to be really defined in there a little bit to help out, because since we, this has not been done in our particular county, and we tend to look at what's going in our county versus outside of that, to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for, you know, communities that really need it, but cannot afford to have that one-fifth buy-in financially. So, if you could look at your policy and look how you can modify some areas to address that. And if it's not a policy aspect, but maybe put a process in there with that to make sure that we're not excluding people that have real-time needs. The other thing that I would like to see is a little bit... The other thing that I would like to see is a little bit, this is a really nice drawing, but it is hard to understand, so maybe help people in your presentation identify what this actually means, so that the average citizen looking at this particular presentation knows what that, what that would look like in real time, maybe like a picture of a neighborhood that it's been done in or something like that. So, those are my two recommendations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Morales.
Just some repeat conversation. I, I hope that we don't default to speed bumps. I think that's what we're going to hear a lot from everybody, and I'm personally not a fan of that. My mother lives with that, and police and fire and EMS cannot, you know, get to the destination in time. So, hopefully, we think very thoroughly on what a speed bumps, you know, what, what it really qualifies for, right? And then, what about the driver feedback signs? Those are also somewhat of a calming tool. Is that within the plan?
That is part of the plan. That's just, it, these, this image here showed some of the larger roadway treatments we can do, but there's, of course, that, that road diet, the striping, there's the driver feedback signs, there's reflectors, there's flashers, there's an entire toolkit at our disposal. And, and I can do, I can go back through, find some of those examples, find some images of, of what me, a driver, might see on the road and add that into the policy as a set of appendices to it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions, one for you, City Manager. In the event that we have an, in excess of need from the budget, you said a hundred thousand is what's been dedicated towards it, for this budget cycle, will we be utilizing the money that we are now moving into our fund balance buckets that we kind of voted on as council? And if so, you know, which, which particular budget will that come from or bucket will that come from in order to fund these?
I think to answer that, you know, it would require a lot of, several things, and, and I would say that, yes, if it's determined that we have requests that exceed the budget and we're able to define what those reasons are, then we have the option to come to council and state that we have requests that exceed the budget. Here's my recommendation for how we fund those things. But let me just point out that since I've been here over a year, and we've been getting speed cushion, traffic calming requests consistently since I've been here, I've found this community to be very receptive of our Public Works and our police staff when they go out and do those assessments and determine that they're not meeting the requirements, they understand that. And, and so, I think with this, it's just putting more parameters. I think there, there tends to be a tendency to think that there's going to be an abundance of, of traffic calming requests coming in, but we've had that. We've had that since December of 2022. And so, to the extent that we continue to put parameters around it, have buy-in from the homeowners associations, and work out the details in terms of the funding allocations, I do not foresee of, of any more than we've been getting in the past. And at least now, we have something that we can defend and stand on.
So, on average, have we been below a hundred thousand dollars in those requests?
Yes, we've, we've turned, we've turned those requests away because they didn't meet just the basic standards of what we would look at in terms of public safety impact.
Yeah, because I was just thinking about, you know, and that leads into my next question, which is, you know, I think it would be helpful that we get a complete list of all of the eligible traffic calming tools in the toolbox that you mentioned, as well as an average cost of what they are currently. Of course, I know, you know, costs fluctuate over time, but I think going, as you plan to, and you shared with us the timeline, you're going next to the HOAs after getting feedback from us to see if this is even something we want to do, is why you came to us first. And so, now that you are going to the HOAs, I think that providing them with this list of options, these tools, and what the average costs are will help them understand a little bit more about the cost that they would be incurring and the cost the city would be incurring if we were to just do this solely, and why it's important to have the buy-in from the HOAs on this, this effort, especially if it's discovered that they meet the qualifications.
Absolutely, Councilmember. And one point I would like to bring up is, funding isn't the only, how do I say, limitation when it comes to implementing these projects. It, it does take staff time to do these. We, we want to reach out, we want to be engaged with the community. If, if we're interested in, you know, increasing the budget on these projects, that has the potential to move things from something that the traffic engineer can handle as a regular course of their duties to potentially maybe being another full-time position, you know? Then, then we move from just implementing projects and, you know, managing projects on the side to really doing more active community engagement. And so, these are things to consider.
All right. City Manager, I do have a question. Earlier in this meeting, there was a public comment that talked about, you know, should have more money into police and fire versus this, or, you know, not put in all of this. But help me understand, wouldn't this help reduce some of the traffic patterns and traffic conditions that the, the public safety would be doing otherwise?
Yes, this is designed to work in conjunction with, what, what we are already doing from a police and fire standpoint. This by no means is redirecting funds away from police and fire. Police and fire is a higher priority as well as traffic calming and ensuring our neighborhoods are, represent the quality that we want them to, to, to meet. So, in, in conjunction to trying to do speed calming, that would take away from the need of having police officers out there positioned in some of these locations where you have high speed doing enforcement. So, that's another alternative that we have available to us, but with limited police staff and wanting them to address higher priority issues, then this is another mechanism to help us leverage our resources.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Great presentation. Looking forward to hearing what other HOAs, when you have these meetings, and what their feedback is, because I think this is probably the first time it's presented to us. I would hope that you all take opportunity at then, then come back to us with what the feedback is.
So, just to summarize that, that was the purpose of this meeting, is to get that feedback from, from each of you, because if you didn't want to move forward with it and you said, nope, this is not something we entertain, then we would stop here. We, there would be no need to go to the HOAs, and at that point, we would just continue to do what we're doing. So, the fact that there has been interest questions, things that we need to adjust, things that we need to make sure to add in here as far as cost allocations and equity across the city and ensuring affordability for those that, that can't, or don't have the resources, and coming up with that mechanism is something that we definitely need to do and will do before we start the presentations with the HOAs. Now, keep in mind that, that calendar up there was a proposed schedule. We are already into this fiscal year, so we will be making decisions once we go through this entire thing, but if there are safety issues, we will address those and we will address those immediately.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, if it's okay with my colleagues, item four B is going to be on our regular meeting at nine B, so if we can receive, receive presentations at that time. If there's no pushback with it, then we can go to our regular meeting. Okay? All right. Item number five are closed executive sessions. We don't have any closed executive sessions here. Item number seven is, no further, no further business. We're going to end this at six twenty-nine PM. Thank you all.